Good afternoon. I am Kim Melnick. School Board Chair and the Administrative, Informal, and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 3:02 on this thirteenth day of February 2024. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please tally the roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber is Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Vice Chair Franklin, Chair Melnick, Ms. Owens is attending via Zoom, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Please note, members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vb schools dot com forward slash meetings forward slash live. It's also broadcast on VVTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. All right, first, well, I guess I'm turning this over to somebody for administrative matters and reports. Oh, look at this.
Yes, as part of School Board Appreciation Month, we figured we would bring some cheer.
Oh, that was great. Tall wood line.
Give me A W E S O M E.
Get that man some pom poms. All right. All right. I don't know how anyone's going to find that, but we're going to let Ryan Hershey, Sustainable Officer with Facility Service, on Sustainable Schools.
Just a quick intro. About once a year, we come to you with a sustainability-related item. So with sustainability, you're talking about social, environmental, and economic outcomes. So for this one, it's budget season. It's always good to focus on the economics. So Ryan Hershey, who's been our Sustainability Officer since about the beginning of the school year, is going to walk us through it. That's a tough act to follow. I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie. So I will do my best. I appreciate it. Good afternoon. Oh, wait, the clicker. There we go. Good afternoon, Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Dr. Robertson, members of the Board. My name is Ryan Hershey, and I'm here today representing the Office of Facility Services to present on Sustainable Schools. The School Board recognizes the critical importance of environmental sustainability in today's changing world and is committed to fostering the principles of environmental, economic, and social stewardship through the incorporation of sustainable design practices throughout the Division. We call this the Triple Bottom Line. Today's presentation will cover a brief history of the District's sustainability journey, an introduction to the Sustainable Schools Committee, historical electricity use and cost data, strategies to reduce electricity use to maintain operational budgets, and a reasonable approximation of utility cost avoidance. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has a rich history of sustainable practices and initiatives. From inventorying greenhouse gas emissions to creating environmental studies program at the Brock Center, from implementing scratch cooking to establishing School Board Policy 3-67 environmentally sustainable practices, which includes initiatives like Energy Star, recycling and waste diversion, reducing energy consumption, environmental sustainability curriculum, emissions reduction, and sustainable building construction. Nearly two decades ago, we completed our greenhouse gas inventory baseline. 2006 was a critical year, not just because we used it as a benchmark year to track energy, but also because in this year, we established the Sustainable Schools Committee. And just what is the Sustainable Schools Committee, and what is their role? The Sustainable Schools Committee is at the heart of the Division's sustainability initiatives. They help to define the Division's goals and approaches. Nothing is done in a vacuum. The Committee was originally comprised of representatives from departments across the Division and chaired by the Sustainability Officer. It provided a means for departments to share what they were doing and to determine next steps to further integrate sustainability into Division practices and culture. I'm happy to share that we're currently in the process of reinstituting this Committee. As it turns out, COVID and change could slow progress, but it couldn't stop it. And while I'd love to continue highlighting more examples of the great work we do and the shared successes we've realized as a Division, the rest of this presentation will focus mainly on facilities and maintenance services, specifically the economic leg of the Triple Bottom Line: the money. This slide represents the Division's average cost per kilowatt hour of electricity. On the Y-axis, the cost per kilowatt hour is indicated in cents, and on the X-axis is fiscal year. To establish this data, we averaged our electricity bills for every school every year since our benchmark year in 2006. In the last 18 years, we've seen the cost of electricity increase 74%. What does this mean? What does one kilowatt hour of electricity get us? Why vacuum my house? It's one of my chores. My home is about 2,500 square feet, and it takes me about an hour to complete that task. The electricity used to vacuum for one hour is roughly equivalent to one kilowatt hour. So let me put that in perspective for us. In 2006, the School Division consumed enough electricity to vacuum the entire city of Virginia Beach, including water, 35 times. That's a lot of vacuuming. If we ever need to do that, we should contract my 16-year-old son. He can vacuum my house in 17 minutes flat. He is very energy-conscious. So what do we do when the electricity, the price of electricity goes up? We use less. In this graph, on the Y-axis, you will find electricity in use in kilowatt hours and the fiscal year on the X-axis. In 2006, the Division set a goal to reduce electricity by 30% by the year 2030. And as you can see, we've consistently exceeded our goal. In 2006, the Division used nearly 200 million kilowatt hours of electricity. Last year, we used just under 130 million kilowatt hours. In other words, in 2023, we could only vacuum Virginia Beach 23 times. That's a 34.6% reduction. But how do we do this? How does the Division reduce its use? Through a collaborative effort between Facilities and Maintenance Services to advance the Division's sustainable building infrastructure. It's how we thoughtfully build new buildings and renovate existing ones. It's how we maintain our building systems to assure proper working order. It's how we engage energy service contractors in performance contracting. It's how we assess individual building performance to assure efficient operation and prioritize retrocommissioning activities. This slide represents an individual on average electricity use for select high schools on a square foot basis. We use kilowatt hour per square foot so that our comparison is apples to apples amongst buildings. On the Y-axis, you will find electricity in use in kilowatt hours per building, square foot, and on the X-axis is fiscal year. Green Run High School, the red line at the top. Green Run once consumed the most electricity per square foot of any high school in the entire district, but through HVAC renovations, operational adjustments, retrocommissioning, controls upgrades, and performance contracting, it now consumes less energy, electricity than the average high school did back in 2006. Kellum High School, I think that's green. By constructing a new high school built to lead standards in accordance with School Board policy, Kellum High School consumes the least electricity per square foot of any high school in the district. And the dashed black line in the center is the average. As we continue to achieve gains through similar initiatives at all the other high schools, you can see that the average high school use per square foot also continues on its downward trend. But what about that blue line? What about Renaissance Academy? While it's a center, not a high school, it operates similarly and is just as big. Renaissance started as the smallest user of electricity per square foot, but in recent years, it has increased. This has not gone unnoticed by Maintenance Services and Facility Services, which is why this building is scheduled to be retrocommissioned in the coming months. Side note: retrocommissioning is like tuning a violin, but instead of adjusting string tightness for tone, we're manipulating building system controls for operational efficiency. Through monitoring, assessment, and continuous improvement, we've been able to achieve these results. But most of the low-hanging fruit has been picked. We are now working with slimmer margins that yield smaller successes. So what would the impact be of intentionally layering our strategies or even introducing new ones to a single school? Layering initiatives would produce results like we've seen at Ocean Lakes Elementary School. This slide shows the electricity use and cost over time. The blue bars are use, and the green line is cost. The X-axis on the left side is use in kilowatt hours, and the Y-axis on the right side is cost in dollars. Again, the X-axis is fiscal year. At our benchmark year in 2006, Ocean Lakes Elementary School's electricity cost was approaching six figures, and at its highest in 2013 was well over six figures. In 2023, it was roughly half that, a cost avoidance of easily $50,000 annually. But how? In 2017, we performed an HVAC renovation and window replacement that replaced most of the HVAC equipment and installed a geothermal system. Additionally, we updated the LED lighting through our energy performance contract. In 2020, we replaced the remaining HVAC equipment utilizing our energy service contract, and in 2021, as a new initiative, we installed solar panels on the roof. In 2022, Ocean Lakes Elementary School produced as much renewable electricity as it consumed, indicated by the yellow bars all the way to the right. But what are the benefits of the long run? All right. Let's take a look at Ocean Lakes Elementary School over the past, present, and the future. Again, you have use in kilowatt hours on the left Y-axis, cost in dollars on the right Y-axis, and fiscal year on the X-axis. The blue bars to the left represent the reduced electricity use through advancing our sustainable building infrastructure. Bless you. The yellow bars represent our fixed electricity costs, yielding a cost avoidance of $1 million over the 25-year solar contract. The single red bar represents the year that our solar contract expires and when we can purchase the solar panels at fair market value. The green bars to the right represent the potential savings the Division could reasonably expect to see after purchasing those panels, yielding another $2.4 million over the following 15 years, for a total of $3.4 million. And when you add the $50,000 annual cost avoidance achieved by using less electricity that we just spoke about, the potential cost avoidance approaches $5 million mark. I say potential because there are a few things that are not included in this estimate: the cost to purchase the solar panels isn't included, degradation of the solar panels over time, and any maintenance associated with the solar panels. Please note that these items are anticipated to have minimal impact on the estimates that we're providing. Now, at this point, you could be asking yourself, for our Ocean Lakes example, how much did we spend on capital improvements and how much did we spend on sustainable building infrastructure? Well, we spent a total of $4.2 million in capital improvements. In 2017, the HVAC renovation cost was $3.1 million. The LED lighting upgrade was $278,000. And in 2020, replacing the remainder of the HVAC equipment was about $900,000. In 2021, the solar installation cost us nothing. As these projects were identified as capital improvement and maintenance needs based on the system's useful life expectancy, a reasonable approximation of the total invested in sustainable building infrastructure is less than $1 million. And that's to realize a cost avoidance of potentially $5 million over the timeline presented. Again, it's how we thoughtfully build new buildings and renovate existing ones. It's how we engage energy service performance contractors for performance contracting, and it's how we assess individual performance to assure efficient operation. This is wonderful news for Ocean Lakes Elementary School, but what have we done for the District as a whole? Again, there's a theme here. You have electricity in use in kilowatts on the left Y-axis, cost in dollars on the right Y-axis, and fiscal year on the X-axis. The blue bars indicate how the Division has reduced electricity use since our benchmark year of 2006. The green line represents our actual annual electricity cost. The red line above it represents what the Division's electricity cost would have been had we not reduced our use. In 2023 alone, we avoided $11.4 million by reducing our use. So then that begs the question, how much total utility cost avoidance have we realized since our benchmark year in 2006 by reducing the use? That is a great question that I would love to assign an exact number to, but the best we can do is approximate. The truth is that this slide isn't perfect. As demonstrated by our Ocean Lakes Elementary School example, it's incredibly challenging to measure and compare all of the associated costs and savings across every building for every initiative with every department. What I can tell you is this: if we were still using the same amount of electricity we were in 2006, it would have cost the Division an additional $97 million over the last 18 years. I can also tell you that we spent $35 million on energy performance contracts with guaranteed payback savings. Our total cost avoidance amount is somewhere in between. But the most important thing to note about this slide is not a number. It's the overwhelming upward trend of our savings over time, knowing that it will only increase as operational costs continue to rise. It will only get better. None of these efforts could have been accomplished without the School Board's recognition of the critical importance of environmental sustainability. And for that, the Division thanks you. And now we end where we started, at the Triple Bottom Line. Today's presentation covered a brief history of the sustainable journey and introduction to the Sustainable Schools Committee, examples of the Division's historic electricity use and cost, strategies the Division implements to reduce electricity use to maintain operational budgets, and a reasonable approximation of utility cost avoidance. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity and will be happy to take any questions.
Mrs. Brown.
Thank you. I appreciate this. You had several numbers that weren't on the presentation: HVAC cost, LED cost. Is there a way that those could be sent to us?
Yep.
Okay. And thank you. I appreciate it. I think that it makes it easier to get a true grasp to explain to the public is sometimes why we're doing these things, and I do think it's important that we're being sustainable, but we also need to explain that we're not really incurring large amounts of costs doing it, that there's actually cost savings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Really exciting news to hear that we're saving money. I do want to ask you, so, you know, when I have homeowners contact me about, you know, should they do some repairs with solar panels, and, you know, one of the things that, you know, you always want to just explain the pros and cons. And so one of the things that I often tell them is that just keep in mind, you know, that there is a higher maintenance cost should you need to replace your roof, you know, there's a higher cost to replace the solar plan or remove the solar plant or panels so they can replace the roof and that sort of thing. And I imagine that, have you put into some of those additional costs that would be layered in due to some of these sustainable initiatives?
So, yeah, no, thank you. That's a great point. So one of the things that we try to do when we target the actual schools that we're installing our solar panels on is we look at the schools for the newest roofs or have the newest roof, and we target them so that we can avoid that potentially. And what happens with the contractors, they're actually required to go back out and recertify that roof to make sure that they're maintaining the warranty once they actually install them. So just to give you one other piece of information, so with Ocean Lakes Elementary School, that roof was nearing the end of its life expectancy. So to avoid that completely, we put a coating on that roof, essentially replaced that roof to get a 30-year warranty out of it prior to installing the solar panels.
Sure, good. Okay. That makes sense. And then, so how many schools do we have that have the solar panels and some of these sustainable initiatives?
Currently, four. Well, in terms of the solar panels.
Okay. Can you name those? I'm sorry.
I can. So let's see. Let's see. Ocean Lakes Elementary School.
I'm sorry. I caught you off guard.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, that's the one that I wasn't prepared for. It was Ocean Lakes Elementary School, Renaissance Academy, Princess Anne Middle School.
Okay.
And there's one more. Thurgood Elementary School.
Oh, good for you. Okay. Okay. Yeah, so relatively new.
And there are four more that we're adding, which is Lenhaven Middle School, I'm sorry, Lanstown Middle School, Lanstown Elementary School, Old Donation, and Red Mill Elementary. Those are the ones that we have designed for next.
Red Mill.
Red Mill.
Okay. Very nice. Well, I love the numbers. Looks good. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Nobody else? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Delaney, and we look forward to your presentation on chronic absenteeism.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. I'm here with Mr. Robert Jamison, Executive Director of Student Support Services, to provide the School Board with an update on chronic absenteeism. Also with us today are three outstanding principals that are here to answer any questions you may have regarding individual school responses to the Chronic Absenteeism Challenge. Dr. Terry Bro, recently appointed as the Director of Elementary School Leadership, currently at Betty F. Williams; Ms. Chambevel, Principal Bayside 6, as many of you know, was a finalist for our National Principal of the Year; and Troy Walden, Principal Bayside High School. Each of them are doing really outstanding work for their students, staff, and community, and we appreciate each of them for being here today. As we begin to talk about chronic absenteeism, let's start with what it means to be chronically absent. I know when we had this discussion previously, when you requested this to come to the Board, there's discussions around chronic absenteeism and truancy, and Mr. Jamison can probably provide that clarity during the question and answer. But from a chronic absenteeism standpoint, this is when a student misses 10% or more of the academic year for any reason. So that includes excused absences, unexcused absenteeism. When we say suspensions, that means out-of-school suspensions, not in-school suspensions. I'd like to lead with the key points we plan to make in today's workshop, and we'll go a little more in-depth into each one of them in our time together. We will share data on the national challenge on chronic absenteeism. Where Sherwood, Virginia has identified it as an area of focus. We'll briefly share the policies and practices that are currently in place in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And Mr. Jamison will share several new strategies that we're implementing as a result of all in Virginia funding. And he will also share examples of how our schools continue to work hard to address this challenge to include the three principals that are here today. It's important for everybody to understand that chronic absenteeism is really a national issue. According to estimates from the Educational Advisory Board, you'll hear me say EAB later in the presentation, chronic absenteeism rates have spiked following the COVID-19 pandemic with more than 8 million more students identified as chronically absent when comparing 2019 to 2022. Again, 8 million more in that three-year period. Research that examines the impact on students typically focuses on the student who is absent and finds that chronically absent students are less likely to read at grade level by the end of third grade and are four times more likely to drop out of high school than their peers. You've heard that third-grade number for years. That is the area of getting them on grade level that is so critical because there's that relationship to dropping out. But research also shows that chronic absenteeism impacts all students. The percentage of chronically absent classmates predicts low reading and math achievement for all students. When examining the reasons for the spike in chronic absenteeism, research by EAB indicates that the increase is due to traditional causes like illness, lack of transportation, housing mobility, academic struggles, as well as some new factors. That is really parents' lower threshold for missing school. Some of this was likely due to the confusion over when it's okay to send a child to school if they're not feeling well, following the extra precautions taken during the pandemic. Chronic absenteeism has also been a focus at the state level, as you see on the slide here. The state began collecting chronic absenteeism as early as 2015, 2016. This slide shows the chronic absenteeism rate for the state of Virginia is indicated in the blue line, and our School Division with the green line. You can see the same spike that was evident at the state level. We consistently outperformed the state in this area, but you can also see where we've increased. Although the state began collecting and reporting chronic absenteeism in 2015, 2016, it was not included in the accreditation system until 2017, 2018. Accreditation was waived for two years during the pandemic, 2019, 20, 2020, 2021, and the chronic absenteeism indicator was waived for a third year in 21, 22. The most recent accreditation data for chronic absenteeism appears in the table on this slide. A school is categorized as Level 1 on the indicator if 15% or fewer of their students are chronically absent. Schools with between 16 and 24% of students designated as chronically absent are in a performance level of 2 in the state accreditation system. Schools where 25% or more of the students are designated as chronically absent are in a performance level of 3. In the fall of 2023, the Virginia Department of Education launched the #Attendance Matters Virginia campaign to address absenteeism in Virginia. Governor Youngkin also convened a task force in the fall to develop resources and distribute action plans for School Divisions to address the issue. Our efforts align with the recommended approaches from the BDOE to address chronic absenteeism. And so at this time, I'm going to welcome Mr. Robert Jamison, again, Executive Director for Student Support Services, to share a few details that highlight the work being done in Virginia Beach.
Well, good afternoon. Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, members of the School Board, Dr. Robertson. As outlined in policy and regulation, students are expected to be in school, in class, and ready for instruction because daily and punctual attendance are essential to each student's academic development. Absence, especially chronic absenteeism from school, is detrimental to student achievement, as you heard from Mr. Delaney. At the elementary, middle school level, if a student does not attend school for at least a portion of the day, he or she is counted absent. At the high school level, absences are computed for each class, and at the middle school level, absences are also computed for each. are also computed for each credit course. Student who misses more than 15 minutes of any class will be counted absent for that class. And as required under the provisions of law, each parent or guardian is responsible for regular and punctual attendance of any child in his or her charge within the compulsory age for school attendance. So, school and central office staff consistently seek ways to support students and families to ensure consistent attendance in school. And our school staff play pivotal roles when addressing absenteeism. From principals, teachers, and school counselors to attendance secretaries and school social workers, schools intervene in a variety of ways to inform families of students' absences and offer resources for support. When students start to accrue absences, some of the resulting actions include, and you may have already heard, phone calls home, attendance letters, conferences, corrective action plans, student response team meetings, attendance contracts, and home visits from our school social workers and additional staff. If these mitigating measures do not yield the intended outcome of improving student attendance, especially for unexcused absences, additional steps are taken to work with families. When situations arrive where students continue to be truant or absent from school without a documented reason, so I want to pause there just to explain that difference. Being truant means being absent from school without a documented reason. Local policies advise schools to involve our court services. During the 22-23 school year, Student Support Services and our Legal Services Team advocated for and secured a dedicated docket for our truancy cases. This more efficient approach has continued for the 23-24 school year, and the court proceedings have positively impacted school attendance for the students involved in these cases. The 2023-2024 Strategic Action Agenda directs us to use, excuse me, use and monitor evidence-based strategies for addressing student attendance. You have already heard some general examples, and now I outlined some division and school-specific examples on this slide as well as the next couple. As part of the VDOE All-In Funds allocated to school divisions to address chronic absenteeism, VBCPS contracted with Everyday Labs to increase communications with families through mail and text messages. Based on students' attendance records, families may receive letters every six to eight weeks, bi-weekly attendance text messages, access to a family support team, and a two-way family chatbot for open communication. Furthermore, school staff will gain access to a central dashboard solely dedicated to attendance that provides analytics, case management tools, intervention tracking and coordination, and professional learning activities for our staff. We anticipate the first messages to be sent later this month, and schools will send out communications to their communities in advance of any text messages or letters being sent. The Attendance Ambassadors, as noted on the screen, is a new program we are launching where retired teachers and administrators will be supporting schools and families. Attendance Ambassadors will be partnered with chronically absent students at Level 3 schools who are at elevated risk for poor school outcomes. They will be advisors, motivators, connectors, and confidence builders for students and their families as we work to build stronger relationships and a sense of belonging in our schools. Our first meeting with the Attendance Ambassadors was last week, Thursday, February 8, and they will begin working with students by the end of the month. Again, please note, the VDOE All-In Funds are being used to fund both Everyday Labs and the Attendance Ambassadors. And for these Attendance Ambassadors, they are being hired as temporary employees, and their contracts will end on June 14. Not noted on the slide, but the VDOE recently provided updated information on flexible instructional time. This in-person classroom instruction outside of the normal school day may be used to recover lost time due to student absences for up to 15 school days. And the Departments of School Leadership, along with Teaching and Learning, are collaborating with principals on how the flexible instruction will be tracked and coded. As you heard earlier from Mr. Delaney, to highlight some of the more impactful approaches already in place to address chronic absenteeism, we gathered information from Dr. Terry Bro, Ms. Chambevel, and Mr. Troy Walton. At Betty F. Williams, they created an attendance committee comprised of administrators, school counselors, school social workers, psychologists, attendance secretary, and their community and school site coordinator. The committee meets once a month. They break up the workload of checking in with teachers and develop a plan based on synergy attendance reports for each class. Additionally, at Betty F., to increase parent and family communication, there's a layered and systematic approach. They make phone calls, conduct SRT meetings, and even send home an attendance sheet that highlights where students fell for the previous quarter regarding their attendance. This effort is similar to the ongoing support Everyday Labs will provide for all schools, so the work at Betty F. is very much research-based and has already proven to be impactful. For Bayside Six, Ms. Bevel has focused on her school culture, climate, and sense of belonging using the Panorama SEL data. Relationships are at the forefront of all these examples, and Ms. Bevel and her staff leverage relationships with students and families to build a strong school community. For example, Bayside Six uses the Ron Clark Academy House System, where all staff, teachers, support staff, bus drivers, cafeteria, and students belong to a house, and they have fun competitions for points earned by following their PBIAS rubric for behavior and good character. Ms. Bevel and her team hold data meetings during lunch with students to review comparative data for English and math, discipline, and attendance, and they set monthly goals, I'm set, monthly goals for attendance and discipline. If the goal is attained, they offer school-wide incentives, and since the students are part of the data conversations, Ms. Bevel believes they are more invested in meeting the goals. And in a recent conversation she shared, I appreciated you calling me to tell me this, most importantly, staff and teachers love our students, and students know we all care about them. Troy Walton implements the Coordination of Services Team at Bayside High School, and the COST is a multidisciplinary team of school staff who meet weekly to discuss and monitor student academics, attendance, and social emotional support. Through the ongoing data collection, tracking, and analysis, the COST focuses on the following: one-time graduation rate, chronic absenteeism, dropouts, as well as SEL resources. School administrators and counselors review school, grade level, and individual student data to make decisions that will improve student achievement. The individual student interventions identified during these weekly meetings are shared with families, allowing school staff to foster stronger relationships and build a network of support. In some instances, COST members conduct home visits to personally deliver meeting invitations. And when attendance meetings occur, a plan is crafted, an attendance contract is signed, and the family is assigned to the Assistant Principal's caseload for progress monitoring. Similar to what was shared before, I just want to take a second to thank our principals, especially our three who are here today, for their ongoing efforts in leadership. They continue to be role models in this area for how this work can be executed. As we move forward, this truly is a partnership. We all play a role in addressing chronic absenteeism and promoting school attendance. Today's presentation focused on what schools are doing, and this slide outsides, excuse me, outlines some initial steps for other very important stakeholders. School board members can be aware of the policies and regs, help constituents with school-aged children understand why attendance matters, and connect families in need with school and school division staff for support. Families should prepare their students for academic success by making sure they are in school when they are not sick, notifying the school by phone or email on the day of the student's absences, and knowing that frequently absent students fall behind in critical reading and math skills. For students, they should speak with their parents, teachers, counselors, and administrators if in need of support. Additionally, with help from school staff, we strive for students to recognize the importance of attending school and develop personal goals for school attendance. So, thank you for allowing us to share this update on chronic absenteeism. Mr. Delaney, the principals, and I are here to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
I know you know you're going to be asked this. I'd like to know how many Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3 schools that we have.
It's on here.
It was on, should be Slide 6.
It's on 6, okay. All right, I'm sorry, I missed it.
It's okay.
The red box.
The red box, okay, gotcha. Okay, all right.
No problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Callen.
You may not know the answer to this, but it's a curiosity as I look through the information that's provided, and it indicates that chronically absent students have an impact on those students who are not absent. Have you been able to hear or learn the connecting dots between why an absent kid has an impact on those that do show up and are paying attention?
I do, I can respond if, sure. So, in the research that I have reviewed, it becomes a strain, just to be honest with you, on the system in terms of how instruction has to be provided for those who are not in attendance. When it comes to remediation, when it comes to providing additional instruction for those who have been absent, there is sometimes a pause on how much enrichment or advancement we can provide in the classroom. It's just, you have one teacher, for example, in any given course, to where they have to shift their focus. And so, when that does happen, and the number of groups that may, the elementary level, that may require one-on-one or even small group instruction for reading, that then limits how much advancement we may have in other sections of our course or in our class. It's a short answer, but that's what the research I have seen has shown.
So, it sounds like the attention that's then given to the child who had been absent impacts on the ability for the class to continue with its learning process.
Correct. As you can imagine, there's a threshold at which, when you're at three or four students in a given classroom, the system can absorb that. But once you start getting into that 15% to 20% range, similar to the Level 1 to Level 3 for chronic absenteeism, it can become a strain on the system.
Okay. Question next has to do with a conversation that I had at the VSBA conference in the fall, and it was talking about the fact that it seems inappropriate that absenteeism has an impact on the school's accreditation.
Yeah.
And the impression left with me was the fact that conversations with Richmond was going to continue to take place to try and alter that in a sense of appropriateness. Do you have any insight as to whether or not that's gaining any headway or making any progress?
I will turn that one over to Matt. I mean, I, don't get me wrong, but I want to pay deference where appropriate.
Thank you. Headway, I think when you heard Mr. Jamison talk about what the state just released on our ability, ability to provide instruction for students off of school hours and regain those absences, I think that's a response to schools saying, "You're holding us to this, and it's a huge challenge for us to address it." I think if you listen to Mr. Jamison's presentation, and if you talk to the principals, you see the amount of work they're doing to address the challenge. And there's other components that are necessary, such as the parents' involvement and others, to ensure that students are getting there. That many times, our schools feel like you're asking us to do something that is very difficult to get done without other people being involved. It's a little bit different than teaching content standards. I hope that makes sense, Mr. Callen, but they did add that component recently that we're going to work on to see how our schools can leverage that additional time. And I think that was a response to that. But I know Dr. Robertson's had conversations as well as Region 2 on how do we, we attack this. I don't see, my, if you're asking me, I don't believe it's going away this year, but I think they've given us that level of flexibility to try to give us some relief.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My question was about that too, and thank you, Mr. Callen, for asking. But, so, it sounds like they understand it's an issue, they're giving us resources needed to, to work through that issue. But in discussions, Dr. Robertson, or Mr. Delaney, you know, are they going to continue to, if they're going to continue to tie that as part of the accreditation process, do you feel like they're also going to continue providing those resources and seeing that move forward in the future?
The All-In Virginia Funding that they've provided us gives us two years of funding from the, from the state.
Two years.
And that's, it's, it's been hugely helpful. For example, it's allowing us to shift our community and schools money into that fund, which has had a huge impact in the three schools that are here. They have case managers at their school from community and schools. I think they average between the three of them about anywhere from 50 to 80 students on a caseload. So, it's been extremely helpful what the state has provided of that component, the Everyday Labs, to, to do that, which is research-based. I would think, you know, they typically don't continue to fund that over time, but we will see. I think as they start to see the interventions get into place, we expect to see a decline in the rate based on our interventions. So, I think they'll be pleased with how we've utilized that support. I hope that answers it, but I can't predict what they're going to do in a couple of years.
And then, I assume, I mean, it's amazing, we have three principals that are being, you know, highlighted here tonight for their work. But I, and, you know, we have some great Level 1, Level 2 work being done. Do you think that we're going to use those practices that, that these highlighted schools and, and all those schools in Level 1, and start trickling those down to all the other schools and principals with training and things like that?
Yes, and I, I would share with you that Mr. Walton is not a Level 1 school, that Bayside High School, and that the cost work they are doing, if you look at his numbers right now, they're Level 1, close to it.
Okay.
But I will share with you, that's just been common practice in Virginia Beach to do significant data-driven decision-making. The work he's doing with COST is no different than what the high schools do on on-time graduation rate. When you see how we've gotten from 89% to 95%, it's using the same processes that he is. Let's talk about students, how they're responding, who all needs to help. You saw in each of their examples, several individuals involved in that process, not only at the school level, but sometimes at the central office level, central support level. So, I think those practices are kind of ingrained. That's why our SOL scores are the way they are, that's why our grad rate goes up. We typically really attack the problem through data.
Okay, great. Fantastic, thank you.
Mr. Culpepper.
Hey, thanks for this. Just wanted to make sure I understand what these stats are telling me exactly. So, a chronic absentee, an individual who is chronically absent, absent is more than 10%?
Correct.
For the academic year. And then, the stats you've got here on the, your slides aren't numbered, but the one with the chart of Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3 schools, when it says Level 1, that means 15% or more of the, excuse me, or less, of the total student body meets that criteria, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct. Good question. I figured somebody was going to ask that because there's a lot of percentages there. Yes, that's correct.
All right, it's all you, thank you.
Okay, as with everything else in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, anything that's thrown at us, our people rise to the occasion. And Cham Priest and Troy and Terry, kudos. Thank you for being here, and thank you for everything you do for our students every single day. Thanks.
Thank you.
We can break in to cheer, just a second.
Yes.
Dr. Robertson?
A W E, S O M E.
Uh-oh. All right, next on our workshop is our Budget CIP, and we welcome Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. The presentation this afternoon is to provide you with the most up-to-date information regarding the school board operating budget. I will then turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman, who will walk through the PPEA, where we are, how we got here, and what's next. The agenda for the presentation shown on this slide is we'll review the responses to any school board member questions and provide an update on the revenue sharing formula, and then the PPEA update will be provided by Mr. Freeman. So, at this time, we have no questions to cover. We did not receive any questions from school board members since the presentation of the SEON on February 6. We do want to share with you some recent information provided by the city budget staff. The city recently updated revenue estimates for fiscal year '24, '25 per the revenue sharing policy. The new revenue sharing amount at this time is $533,949,052. That's inclusive of debt service and pay-go. So, this is a $1,518,995 increase over the amount provided to the division back in the fall. The city will include this increase as a reserve within the school operating fund within the city manager's proposed budget at this time. So, realize that this revised amount is still an estimate and is subject to change. And in addition, there's likely to be continued discussion by city council regarding any potential cut in the current real estate tax rate, which is a revenue reduction for the school division. So, at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Ms. Pate.
Yeah, it's not, she doesn't have it open yet. Yeah, I can't see my, there you go. All right, we're going to bring Ms. Pate back up, if you don't mind.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Manning's not here, but there was an email that she sent to a superintendent asking a question about contracts with communities and schools and Panorama. I think that's related to the SEON.
Yeah, I think we provided an answer to that question on the last presentation.
We did.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'll get that answer from you later, don't worry.
Ms. Pate.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Pate, I guess this could be a Ms. Pate and a Dr. Robertson question. And we have discussed this offline, but I wanted to discuss it with my colleagues here. I know that we have recently received some abatement funds due to settlements from substance use and abuse, legal settlements. Can you Can you tell me how much that is?
So today, we have received an initial payment, I think back in December, of seven hundred and forty-some thousand, forty-two thousand dollars. I don't have the figures in front of me. There's also, was scheduled to receive, and I'd have to check with Business Services, but it should have been received last week for almost a hundred and forty-nine thousand, a little over a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. There will be, I believe, three additional payments each December of the next three fiscal years. Those are percentages of the total settlement, so I don't want to speculate on those dollar amounts, but I suspect they're within that same last payment. So that's where we are right now.
Okay. So that's close to nine hundred thousand dollars, and that's in a settlement fund?
It is typically, right now, it's, we don't have anything for, in settlement, so it's in our revenue, it's just in our general revenue for the operating budget. But I do know we have the option of, if the board so desires, and that's the direction that we get, that that money can be, we can ask for that through a resolution and going to city council for that to be placed possibly in, in our reserve so that it can be used. Because right now, with it sitting in the general fund, it would get reverted at the end of the fiscal year if it's not spent.
Okay. And Dr. Robertson, I, we've had this discussion, and I, I've shared my frustration, actually, that we didn't have something tagged or earmarked or reserved out of this almost million dollars going toward the recovery school, which we have unanimously given you the thumbs up to go out and, and try to make it happen. So I am asking you why that is and can we, with direction, earmark some of this to be reserved for the recovery school if we, in fact, need to use it? I think that would make huge statements, especially since they are discussing this at the state level.
So yes, thank you for the question, Ms. Williams. And yeah, the, we have not done anything with that money yet. It was given for a particular purpose as a result of the opioid crisis. So we didn't use it for any other purpose. Currently, or two years ago, we did a lot of work, Dr. Saltner, Mr. Jamison, yourself, Matt Delaney, on developing a recovery school that we could operate in Virginia Beach, to the, to the point where we had a site developed and had looked at the site, were ready to do the plans, had put in the information to the state, didn't get any grant support, and at the, at that time, it was, the board deemed it was cost prohibitive. What we heard out of that process was, boy, if you can do it as a regional model, there'll be a lot more support at the state level if you can do it as a regional model. So what I've been able to do over the last two months is get commitments from four local school divisions, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Suffolk, to continue to investigate the creation of a recovery school somewhere in Region Two, whether it's Virginia Beach or Chesapeake or any other location. There is a bill that is, that is going to the floor this week that we feel good about in terms of the, getting support for a Region Two recovery school. What's unknown is how much money will be added to support that. We are hopeful that there'll be some money provided to support that. At that point, we'll convene with the other four superintendents to talk about a path forward. But to your question, you know, why haven't we put anything into our budget out of that money? Because it's sitting there. And the reality is, you know, if, my personal opinion, we should put some money aside into a recovery school. I think that the data is clear about the challenge that we have. There's some other needs that board members have brought up for potential use of some of those funds. We've heard our high school principals talk about some of the challenges with vaping, and we can't put vape detectors in restrooms.
Yeah.
We don't know exactly what that cost is, but we can certainly find out. So we would be looking for board direction on how much money you'd want to set aside for the purpose of a recovery school and how much money you'd want to set aside for the purpose of doing vape detectors. I think that with the assembly convening in March, we may even know next week at this time whether or not the bill passed and whether or not there's funds involved. In fact, I have a tentative meeting scheduled on Friday with those other four superintendents at our national event in San Diego. That's how confident we are that the bill's going to pass the floor. We just don't know if the dollar amount's going to be there. But, but absolutely staying ready to take direction from the board. A lot of effort's been put into this process for the last several years. The money was given to us as a settlement, and I think that, I'm confident Virginia Beach can put this plan together and make it a successful venture and do so at a cost that's, that's reasonable. One of the challenges, we heard a couple of years ago, it could be forty or fifty thousand dollars a kid. I'm confident we can get that number down to pretty much per pupil funding, kind of the money follows the student if you put them over there. We also know we have regional partnerships right now with programs like CSEP and TRAC. So we're familiar with how the process works. We just, we just, again, two things, need to figure out what they're going to do in Richmond, which we'll know probably in about a week, and then, two, direction from the board about what the board would like to do with these funds.
Okay, thank you. And colleagues, I would like to start that direction giving by asking that we earmark five hundred thousand dollars out of that roughly nine hundred thousand dollars to go for a recovery school, and the remaining to be determined. I do agree that we need some vape detectors because, as we know, vaping is very addictive, and they are lacing it with all sorts of things, such as fentanyl and everything else in between. So, but I do ask that we earmark five hundred thousand. If funding comes back from the state and totally just knocks us off our socks and they fund a lot more than we think, we don't have to use it. So this is just to earmark it for the recovery school in case it's needed. And again, I think we got to put our money where our mouth is. If we think this is important, we have money that was a settlement because of this crisis. It is, it, it's beyond common sense that we use it for this and for these kids. So I'm asking for direction so that we can earmark that for, for the recovery school and then hopefully add to it from other funding revenues. Thank you.
I do want to clarify, the settlement money you're talking about is not opioid. That's.
Yeah. It's from substance, well, I know we can't say the name, but it's from substance use and substance abuse. Yes.
I will add, that other set of money, the opioid abatement money, we have been in a couple of meetings with the city over the last three weeks with Mr. Jamison, and Mr. Jamison's an influencer. He has a really tight relationship with, with, and we deliver with the things that we've done. So we're hopeful we're going to get a nice little bit of money out of there to support some programs that we've already developed that are just sitting on paper, ready to hit go, just waiting for the money.
Right. Well, and that's what's so frustrating, money is sitting there, both at the state level and the local level. And again, we need to move forward and say, we're committed to this. If not, we need to pack it up and do something else. But that money needs to go for the problem, and the problem is to help these kids. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Riggs?
What was the total amount? It was five million?
We can't really discuss that. That's part of your settlement agreement. Some of that is confidential for the settlement agreement, so we really aren't.
That she just gave us?
She gave you what came in so far, that that's money received that you can discuss.
Right. That's all eight hundred and ninety-one. No, no, not for that. I'm talking about our budget, the revenue sharing.
It was a million, five eighteen.
That we're over, but what was the total? I got, I got that.
Oh, the five hundred and thirty-three million, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, fifty-two dollars. Now, that's inclusive of debt service and pay-go, which usually come right off the top of that.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't get that. Okay, thank you. The other question I have, and this might be for Mr. Freeman, have you guys checked on, on the cost of these vape detectors yet?
Just a rough.
Just a rough? I mean, have you looked at it? And would we be able to put them in all of our high schools?
And middle school.
And, and of course, middle schools, too, but at least get them in the high schools first.
We, we can get you on, we have a quote for an individual high school, but if you want something broader, we can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I also would be very curious to hear how much the vape detectors cost. I think that's, it's, it's a challenge that's definitely been facing our schools, and I did just check House Bill six ninety-six, which is the recovery school, that hopefully there will be some funding attached to later. Did pass the House on a ninety-nine zero, one non-vote. So that is moving forward and, and crossover, but I don't know, again, about that funding piece. But I do think that we should earmark some of it, and I think what you said that was concerning to me is that it would end up in our reversion funds if we don't earmark it for something specific. So I, I think that we ought to do that, or it's going to go to twelve hundred square feet of school building, which is important, too, but, you know, I think that we can earmark some of that. My question is related to the line item budget. Last year, we had gotten an Excel line item budget, and it's been requested a couple of times, but I don't see it. Is that something that we can get sent to us again?
I, is this the spreadsheet that we sent last year?
Yes.
I haven't seen that request, but certainly, once the budget is done, right now, what you will see is what's in the C E on, which is going to change a lot. But I mean, so I don't know that we normally would give it at this point. Last time, I think it was after you were elected, so it was something that was already adopted. That's what would be my only caution, is what I would give you now is going to change. What is out of our system?
It wasn't after the budget was already adopted because we hadn't voted on it yet. I'll look up the date.
Okay, yeah.
And I'll email about it. Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, and so now we welcome.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Sorry, thank you. Moving forward, Chair, how would you like me to proceed with directions? We usually don't give motions, obviously, in workshop. Would you like me to give a motion and, later on, in the formal meeting?
Certainly.
Okay. I will be doing that, colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, and now we welcome back Mr. Freeman, our Chief Operating Officer.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. All right, although we received no questions from the board, we understood that there wanted to be further conversation around the P P E A, so we came back to kind of guide you through that. So I'll start by sharing a broad overview of the process. If I can make this thing forward.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, so one important concept is that we've always been on a status quo path. Status quo for Virginia Beach City Public Schools has been a design bid build process. Develop a hundred percent design, put it out for bid, accept the lowest responsible bidder to build it. Our adopted C I P, the one that you approved from last year, is the status quo path. The interim agreement we've been working on for the last year was designed to enable a final evaluation of the P P E A's suitability for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. In the next several slides, I'll walk you through the sequence of significant events and updates to our two elected bodies. I'll refresh everyone on the interim agreement process that resulted in the delivery of a guaranteed maximum price to the school board on January twenty-third, with a recommendation from staff not to proceed at this time for financial reasons. This is not intended to be a comprehensive timeline. It does not include every P P E A discussion with the board and council. It just captures the significant events. Staff received the unsolicited, unsolicited proposal from S B Ballard on June fourth, 2021. We took some time to evaluate it, and it had elements that it had potential to be advantageous to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and it was legal. On August twenty-fourth, 2021, the school board authorized acceptance of the unsolicited P P A. The next step was to enable a competitive process where other contractors could submit proposals. We received one other proposal. From there, both contractors developed detailed proposals, and we had those on March eighteenth of 2022. A committee evaluated the two proposals and chose Ballard as the preferred offer. Between March and June, staff negotiated an interim agreement with Ballard for a not-to-exceed price of fifteen point four million, which was shared with the board on June twenty-eighth. We then conducted a public hearing and posted documents online for thirty days prior to the school board vote on August ninth. That vote approved entering into an interim agreement, which then needed to go to city council for approval. To prepare city council, we briefed them on July fifth during the thirty-day waiting period. The original intention was to go back to council on August eighteenth for a decision, but they requested another brief instead to be followed by a decision in September. Multiple deferrals followed from city council. One of the stated reasons was waiting for newly-elected members of council to be the deciders. When the new council members deliberated after the first of the year, they wondered if the newly-elected school board agreed with proceeding with the interim agreement. Therefore, on February twenty-eighth, this board deliberated again and reaffirmed the intent to proceed with an interim agreement by a vote of seven, two, with one extension. Council followed with their approval on March seventh. Staff worked with the contractor over the course of the past years to accomplish the deliverables of the interim agreement, which ended with a educational specifications and design brief on January ninth and a G M P, guaranteed maximum price, brief on January There was discussion before approving the interim agreement, and we've heard questions recently, what do we get from the interim agreement if we don't proceed with the P P A? The agreement called for delivery of thirty percent designs for all three buildings. This included educational specifications. As you recall, we received feedback last year during the budget cycle that the board felt the previous educational specifications from about 2010 were outdated and directed staff to update them during the interim agreement. The input process for educational specification design work included twenty-nine public input meetings, four student-focused group meetings, over eighty interviews with various stakeholders, and online surveys. So we now have those three designs, one of which is a prototype design that can be used for other high schools. It's also worth noting that the level of detail in those designs that we now own is greater than thirty percent. That was necessary for Ballard to develop a guaranteed maximum price that was reasonable. The interim agreement also included site surveys and building code analysis. For example, at Princeanne High School, there was substantial research and legal work related to subdividing the Princeanne High School site in order to satisfy requirements for new construction. For building systems, things like wall structure, suitability for geothermal, and public sanitary sewer infrastructure were analyzed. Code requirements were explored with the city for things like traffic engineering and stormwater suitability. Finally, there was significant work done with the city, and that important to analyze financials. We analyzed appropriations, cash and bond payback, which relates to debt service, and timing of our expenditures, which affects cash flows. All right, so that was an abbreviated history of the P P A. And there seems like there's questions about how we move forward about, as with, as one organization. We briefed you on January twenty-third that, like other steps in the P P A process, three wickets needed to be met to be able to move forward. First, a staff recommendation to move forward. Second, a vote from the school board of approval. And then, third, a vote from city council of approving the next step in the process. Staff did not and does not recommend moving forward the P P A at this time, and therefore the pre-P P A process has ended unless there's other direction from the board. We've heard questions about providing scalable options to city council. In short, the process ended before the scalable options process. And perhaps it might help if we talk about what that process would have looked like if staff had, remember, had recommended proceeding with the P P A. So if the number had looked favorable and the debt service number was not exceeded and we recommended proceeding, in that case, here would have been the recommendation. We would have asked the board for further guidance related to scalable options. Staff presented what the experts believed was needed in the context of Virginia Beach City Public Schools' values and priorities. We did not include artificial extra space in these designs. For example, there was no third basketball gym that was added to make it an easy scalable options. We believed we needed two, we included two. We would need guidance from the board for the values and priorities to minimize. For example, based on feedback from the board, council, and the community, there was substantial space that was included in these designs to accommodate career and technical education. We would need to hear from the board that if that was a suitable priority to either reduce or. We would need to hear from the board that if that was a suitable priority to either reduce or eliminate. So if the board directs staff to go through that process, that's what the process may look like. Other things to consider is we would continue working with the contractor through the interim agreement to develop those options, and we would be charging more billable hours to the interim agreement. Further, our proposed CIP with current funding can only accommodate one new school. With that level of funding, the other schools cannot be accomplished. We would be incurring cost without clear added value. So options to consider are letting the interim agreement run its course, and no action is required on the part of the board. You could direct us to terminate the interim agreement. There's still some site work items that we're finalizing and terminating. Terminating the interim agreement is likely not within Virginia Beach City Public Schools' best interest. Or you could direct staff to pursue one of the two projects under the PPA. S.B. Ballard continues to advocate that any one of these schools or any combination can be built quicker with less cost. For example, they say they can deliver Williams and Bayside 6 up to a year earlier at a cost savings between $2 and $9 million. You're standing by for your guidance. I'll now turn it back over to Ms. Pink.
So at this time, we'll open up for any additional questions from the board. We are going to just follow the same process we followed, that if you have any questions throughout the week, please try to get them to Dr. Robertson and myself and all the school board members by Friday, so that we can prepare some responses. It has been mentioned crossover is happening today, so we do hope to have some numbers from that process by the end of the week, and that we can bring back to you in the workshop on February 20th.
Mrs. Anderson?
So, Mr. Freeman, you might need to come back up. I'm not sure. First of all, I want to say that the board has not voted yet. So the PPEA, in my opinion, is not dead yet, because we have not voted.
That's true.
I've also been contacted personally by a couple of school, well, a couple of city council members, who have said, "It's not dead. There are other options out there that you could pursue, but it's up to you all as a school board to vote on those options." I have another option, which I would love to be able to talk about, but I'm not comfortable talking about it, because one of those options has to do with some litigation that we're involved with right now. And, but it is, it is an out-of-the-box option that I want to deal with, with this board and with Dr. Robertson. And it is, it's actually something that I've talked informally about with a couple of other city council members, and they are very much in favor of it. But I haven't had a chance to see Dr. Robertson or to talk with this board in closed session about this particular option. I don't want to, I don't want to go into it publicly yet, because, as I said, it involves litigation. So, that being said, I want the board to know that there is another option that I'm going to be bringing forward, but it has to do with going ahead and thinking about building Princess Anne High School. That's all I'll tell you about it at this point, and where we can find the funds to do that. So I don't want to be secretive about it, because I know that, you know, we're trying to be as open and honest as possible, but at the same time, I don't want to go into complete detail about this because of litigation that's involved. So, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin?
Thank you. Mr. Freeman, so, you know, in my opinion, we do not have the administration's recommendation to move forward. However, there has been, you know, when it comes to the scalable option discussion, there has been a question based on the resolution from the city council, whether or not it's a requirement. So I guess the question is for Ms. Lanetti and Mr. Freeman and Dr. Robertson. So at this point, you know, I think there's some confusion about where we are in this process. Do we need, are we required to provide scalable options based on the resolution?
The interim agreement is what you're in the middle of right now, which was due to run out at the end of March 2024, whenever the deliverables come in. The deliverables that you get for the interim agreement are Exhibit B to the interim agreement documents. That tells you what you're expecting. Mr. Freeman explained some of that. It did not include the scalable options, so that was not written into the interim agreement. The scalable options came from the resolution the city council sent to you. And the PPA has a couple of steps. If you're going to ask your local government to fund it, you do have to go through with the local government approving the funding. So that was, and because you took an unusual step, it's not a typical step in a PPA, but it's a very allowable step, the interim agreement, that went to city council first. They came back, said, "If you want to spend the $15 million for the interim agreement, if you want to come back to it, we'll approve that interim agreement with the understanding, if you're going to come back to us with the entire project, you need to bring us scalable options and a funding solution." So that's city council's requirement to you, to say, "If you want to come back with that, you need to come back with us." What Mr. Freeman was telling you was they didn't get that far, because it has come to light that you do not have the funding to do this large, a project. You were down to roughly 50, I'm going to say 59 million. That cannot, you can't handle the two other schools and the subprojects that are involved in this. So the question has come back to, what are you going to do about it? So you do have options, how you want to go forward. I will talk to you a little bit of closed session on some of the options on there, but you need to direct them. You can't, you don't have the funding to do everything in that PPA. Now, you do have options within the PPA. You don't have to pick all of it, but you can't figure that out until you determine what your priority is. So I think your scalable options come, if you're going to go back to city council and say, "We want you to fund one of these projects," then you need to bring that back to them. The interim agreement itself did not have the scalable project, scale. That's on you and the school administration to pull out. So you have your guaranteed maximum price coming through. Now you need to figure out what you're going to do. But I'm not, I think what Mr. Freeman is telling you, if you want to spend the money on doing that scalable options, then you better figure out which is your first project, because obviously, you don't have enough funding. That's what you heard two, three weeks ago. You don't have enough funding. So what is the step? And when you, if you decide you're going forward with any of these projects, that might be the time you do the scalable options.
So I just want to be clear, because I'm not inclined to spend more time and money on scalable options, but there has been a little bit of confusion about whether that was a requirement. So I want to make sure that we are all clear at this point, that this is not a requirement, where we're sitting right now. Okay? And then, so the next step then would be, we then need to vote on the PPA, so we have an official vote from the board, correct?
You have a couple of options. Your interim agreement, when the deliverables are done, which again is Exhibit B in the interim agreement, if they come in, and it was due in about the end of March. If all that comes in, you don't, the interim agreement does not obligate you to go towards a comprehensive agreement to anything. That's very clear in your interim agreement. So if that just runs out and you do nothing, then nothing happens. And that would, stepped up to you. But if you want to go forward on any of these projects, then you want, you got to figure it out in your CIP budget, and then you got to figure out what you're going to do. In that case, you would vote.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, in terms of the PPEA, so we can set, put, kind of, have a decision made based on that, because there, you know, there was a comment that we shouldn't be saying it's dead, and I think even Ms. Anderson just commented that, you know. So I think for the public and for the board and for the division, do we need to vote on putting to bed this PPA project at this point? And then diverting the conversation and now moving forward with a design bid build on another project? I mean, I just feel like we're kind of unsettled at this point, where we are in terms of the PPA. Do we need to vote as a board to?
Again, I'm going to go back. Your interim agreement will conclude sometime in the next month or two, when all the deliverables.
I understand that.
In which case, if you don't, if you just leave it, nothing happens. Nothing happens, nothing goes forward. If you want to go forward with building any of those projects or CIP, you need to, one, adopt your CIP budget, and then you got to figure out what you're going. You can go forward, but it doesn't automatically go forward. The interim agreement doesn't. And the PPA process will stop until you make a decision.
Okay. Because, again, there's been a lot of discussion about that. So I just want to make sure that we're very clear.
And if I may, just one piece of clarity, and I may hurt it differently. So, again, we are on a status quo path, that if we do nothing to approve a PPEA option, so for example, the one that you described, if we do nothing to approve it, we are on a adopted CIP path, which means that we will be doing what you find in your book, the proposed, we have the current adopted, and then there's the proposed that's in front of you. So we would be proceeding down that, not under a PPEA path, unless the board specifically directs that to occur, and then it goes to city council, and city council then approved whatever that version of a PPEA looked like. There was a proposal that maybe we built one school as part of it. That is legal. That's something the board would have to wrestle with, as well as council.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I agree that there's been lots of confusion. And I think the confusion was that city council received an email that was truthful, that was a recommendation by our staff to do, not to do something, and that we didn't take a vote. And so everybody's confused. I'm confused, because we, and we've, I just think we have to have clear direction. I don't think the best thing is just to let it run out till mid-March or whatever, because city council is very confused, and they've made remarks about, and I know why they were confused, because they got an email without a vote, and so we need to, we need to clear, we need to clear that up. That needs to be number one. I understand what you're saying, but we need to clear it up, so that everybody knows how we're moving forward, if we're not moving forward with the PPA, how we're moving with the CIP, what project is, and all that stuff. But I do agree that we need to do it sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board, for your attention to these workshops. We did exceedingly well. It is 4:23, which means we have time for closed session. Sure.
I'm sorry?
The call? The closed session call?
Should I just keep a copy of that?
It's Ms. Franklin, it's underneath here. Is that it?
Okay, I got it, thank you.
She's making some adjustments. She's making some adjustments to the call.
So I move that the school board recesses to closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711 Part A, Paragraphs 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, and 29, as amended, to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting if such student, parents, or guardians have requested writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of the subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has some reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Twenty-nine, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviewers of bidders or offers, and discussions of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Namely, to discuss: A, status of pending employee discrimination cases and complaints; B, discussion with staff regarding status of certain matters related to real property related to educational services; C, discussion and legal advice concerning PPEA-related projects; D, status of pending student cases and complaints; E, decision on student discrimination complaint; F, status of pending litigation or administrative cases; G, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters; and H, application and interview questions for appointment process. Do I have a?
Okay, is that motion made by Ms. Franklin? Is there a second? Second by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Seeing none. The voting board is open.
I'm a yes. I timed out.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, two go into closed session.
In a closed meeting on the state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
All right, motion made by? I'm looking. Mr. Callen, second by Mr. Cole Pepper. Any discussion? Voting board is open. Okay, so for certification of closed, we have seven ayes, one nay, and two abstentions. She's not, she's not here. Yeah. It fit in the call. Okay, that's fine. All right. See everybody at 6 o'clock.